Did Ashley hear us?
Hello.
Commissioner Kogler?
Here.
Commissioner Marlowe?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly? Chairperson Christensen? So the record will reflect that Commissioners Davis, Connolly, and Christensen are absent, and that Kovarubius has assumed the chair.
Thank you for that. Staff introductions, please.
Marcy Reynoso and Ashley Peterson, Administrative Assistants.
Warren Frase, Community Development Director.
Darcy Delgado, Associate Planner.
Okay.
Elizabeth Pauls, City Attorney.
Got it. Perfect. Any general public comments regarding matters not on the agenda? Seeing none? Any agenda items?
Online?
Oh, I'm sorry, Marcy. Anybody online?
No, there's no callers.
Thank you for that. Any agenda items proposed to be tabled or rescheduled?
There are none.
Excellent. So let's go into the public hearing. Let's start with Warren. We may have a quorum, I believe.
Chairperson, Kovarubius, I need to recuse myself as the company I work for has provided estimating on your early project.
Okay, so with that recusal, doesn't leave us with a quorum.
Elizabeth, are you listening in?
I am listening in. So if we do not have a quorum for this item, this item will have to be continued by operation of law to the next meeting.
Okay, do we need a motion on that?
You don't have enough people to make a motion, so it just happens on its own.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to then discussion items. Items number one, we have a comprehensive zoning code update. Do we have a staff report?
So I'll go ahead and give a brief introduction. So as I'm sure you're all aware, we've been working on this zoning code update for several years now. I think we started in 2021, and we're near the finish line. So we're bringing Genevieve back tonight. So here, she's on the screen, and she's going to be doing a presentation. So we've had several meetings over the years, these study sessions. And so that's what tonight is. It's kind of what we think is the last study session. So I will just go ahead and hand it off to Genevieve Sherrill with MIG. She's our wonderful consultant who's been leading us through this process. And so Genevieve, I'll go ahead and hand it to you.
Great. Thank you so much, Darcy, and good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me back tonight. I'm excited to talk to you a little bit more about the zoning code. I'm going to share my screen so that you can see the presentation as well. And you should be able to see my screen now. So thanks again, Genevieve Sherrill with MIG. Thanks for having me back. Tonight's study session really builds on the previous meetings and the work that we've done together over the last few years. We've met a number of times now as we've been working through the process of putting together the zoning code. You've seen a lot of different pieces independently. And so here tonight, we're trying to bring it all together for you, give you the one cohesive package for your review. So tonight, I'd like to start by reviewing some of our project objectives, the process that got us here where we are today, and some of the next steps moving forward. As we've discussed in the past, the zoning code will be reorganized into nine articles. I'm going to give a kind of a high-level summary of what the changes are associated with each of those articles as part of the update, and we'll have time at the end for questions and discussion. So zoning codes again have, they tend to have a natural order of organization and largely pertain to three main things. One, how can you use your property? What are those uses that are allowed in a particular plot of land? What development standards apply? How tall can I build? What parking needs to be provided? What landscaping setback? Those kinds of things. And what permits do I have to get to get that project approved? Is it a plot plan, a site plan, a development plan, or a conditional use permit, or a variance? So those are the three big questions that are answered through a zoning code update. The PASO zoning code update has not been comprehensively updated in, as you know, 50 years. So as such, one of the really key objectives of this update is to take the existing code, reorganize it, simplify the language to try and be as brief and to the point as possible, provide that clarity to the user to understand what it is that's required of them. We also need the code to be internally consistent. As it's been updated over the years, there have been some inconsistencies that have woven in. So we've set up a structure to try and avoid some of those inconsistencies in the future. We try not to repeat things in multiple locations where if you change it in one location and don't change it in another, you have a conflict. So we're setting you up for hopefully success moving forward where future amendments occur. They're only going to occur in one place and hopefully in a logical place. We're also adding some more modern approaches, streamlining reviews through some clarity and structure, summarizing information as much as we can in table format and with graphics, and of course, implementing laws that have been adopted in recent years. So our process for updating the zoning code, I wanted to just give you a bit of a summary of the process to date. So the process began back in 2021, and we started with stakeholder interviews. Staff sent out invitation and emails to about 20 people and firms and kind of entities that regularly use the zoning code. These are architects and developers, property owners. Of those, seven people came back and responded and said that they would be interested in interviewing and interviewed with us and provided us with, you know, where they saw issues with the code, where they saw room for improvement, where they saw room for process improvement and things like that. We also interviewed code enforcement staff at the time, asking them about what are the common code compliance questions that they receive, the complaints they receive, and also where do they find it tricky to interpret the code, and where can, you know, improvements be made there as well. Following those interviews, we did a quick community survey out to the community. We didn't get a ton of response, but we did get a little, asking the community to weigh in. It's a kind of esoteric question of what would you like to see in a zoning code? But asking them, you know, are there any specific standards that are bothering you in the zoning code that aren't working? Anything that warrants attention for us to look at in the code? And that, that community survey was put out in the fall of '21. Another key engagement group was, of course, the Housing Constraints and Opportunities Committee, the HCOC, building from all of the good work that they did throughout the housing element process. We worked with them and held four meetings to discuss some key housing issues, including housing around the Uptown Town Center specific plan area, key uses. They looked at the use table and standards for those uses, and they also looked at the Article Two, which we'll talk about tonight, of course, and the permitting and processing procedures. And then finally, of course, key input from the Planning Commission. We had six, and now this will be our seventh study session tonight, going through independently chunks of the zoning code as we moved along to try and have that conversation holistically throughout the process, getting your insight throughout the process. So those study sessions have really paralleled some of these various articles of the zoning code. As we drafted each batch, we tried to bring it to you to discuss those key policy questions, receive that feedback, incorporate it in, and bring it forward into the next section. So that brings us to tonight's meeting, which combines all of these unique sections that we've reviewed so far into this one comprehensive draft. So our goal tonight is to review this draft, and with next steps being a Planning Commission hearing in August to consider the adoption of the draft zoning code, followed by first and second readings with the city council after that. So the zoning code has been reorganized into these nine articles. The intent, of course, is really to try and make it as intuitive and easily searchable as possible. The first article, Article One, represents the enactment of the zoning code. This article establishes some rules for interpretation and establishes the individual zoning districts, overlays, and the special plan developments. Most of this language is kind of standard language of enacting a zoning code and is carried forward. There's just a few changes. The key changes here are repealing two of the special plan development overlays. These were formerly called special condition overlays. These are D and E that would be repealed. They have been fully developed and are essentially obsolete, so taking them out of the zoning code makes sense. Article Two, this is one of my favorite articles, actually. This establishes the process for obtaining a permit or an entitlement, and it clarifies who is the acting authority on reviewing that permit or entitlement. So the first chapter of this article lists the responsibilities of each entity, be it the Planning Commission, the Development Review Committee, the DRC, or the director. Each of those entities has their responsibilities listed. And then we also included a handy table to summarize kind of all the different responsibilities and who does what in Section 21.08070. So that's hopefully a handy table to reference moving forward to know which entity is responsible for which. Subsequent chapters throughout this article review each of the individual entitlements or permits and the process that someone has to go through for obtaining that permit. This section also includes the process of going through an appeal, what needs to be done for public hearing and noticing, and how an entitlement could be modified or revoked. The majority of this code really does parallel the existing code, but in a new organization and with more clarifying language. One of those key clarifications, of course, is that who is responsible for what, the Development Review Authority table. One other significant change to note is kind of the formalization of a modification to standards process. And this is applicable at both the Planning Commission level and Development Review Committee levels. So throughout the existing code, there's language that the DRC or the Planning Commission can approve certain modifications to standards, be it a fence height or some other kind of minor modification. But it doesn't list in the current code what the formal process is for that to happen. So this code update introduces that more kind of formal process. It adds findings for what that process would be, and it also includes some additional measures that may have kind of cropped up over the years that may or may not be clearly listed in the zoning code, but staff identified as measures that should be included as potential modifications to go through this new formalized process. So some of the modifications that are included here are minor modifications to fence heights, minor modifications to accessory size, accessory structure size, grading standards have modifications that are allowed, clearly articulated what those changes could be, and then, of course, the associated findings with that. And then one other change in this article that I wanted to point out is about oak tree removals. So we've had some discussions on oak tree removals in the past with the discussion that, you know, some very minor oak tree removals don't necessarily have to go all the way up to the city council level for their review. So in an effort to try and streamline some of that process, staff has come up with some recommendations for different thresholds where oak tree removals wouldn't necessarily have to go to the city council. So in particular, and this slide, this is a little bit different from the public review draft that you have in your packet and that has been out for public review for the last month now. As over the last month, we had a few more conversations about this and wanted to tweak it a little bit more so that the red underlying text represents a change from the public review draft that we'd like to propose to incorporate into the final draft. So what doesn't change is the initial recommendation is that city council is going to look at any oak tree removals for 10 or more oak trees, and that planning commission generally looks at any oak tree removals that would occur with development changes for between, for up to nine oak tree removals. The minor modification is what DRC would look at, and DRC is really only going to look at removal of an oak tree if it's dead or dying and it isn't associated with a development project. So it needs to be coming down because there's something wrong with the tree, but not because a building's going to be going into place. That could go to DRC for their review with an arborist review. But anything that's associated with development would go to planning commission as long as it's less than that, less than 10 trees. Anything more than 10 trees would go to city council. Article Three is a really important article. This is where a lot of regulations live. It covers how you use your property and what are the basic development standards that are associated with each individual zoning district. So Chapter 21.32 contains the big land use table. So it lists across the top all of the individual zones and then all of the uses that are allowed in each of those zones, either as an allowed use or if a use needs a conditional use permit. The subsequent chapters of this article are organized by type of zoning district, the residential zones, the commercial zones, overlay zones, and that type. Again, the bulk of the content, the intent of the zoning districts and the uses all remains the same. There are some kind of obvious changes that we wanted to highlight for you, one of the major ones being the use table. The overarching objective that we had was to simplify the uses. Many of the uses were listed in the old table, you know, with 20 different types of retail that we've combined into one. So really trying to simplify that, shorten that table, and then have, make sure we have an associated definition for each of those uses, and that's in our Article Nine definitions. So the goal here really is to provide that clarity so there's less interpretation needed by both staff and applicants moving forward. It should be clear whether a use is allowed and in which zoning district it's allowed. Some of the specific changes to the use table include that combination of combining those uses into simplified uses so our uses don't look one for one in the existing table. But we tried where we combined. We tried to make sure that we stayed fairly consistent with what uses were allowed. There are some specific changes that I wanted to point out. Office professional zone is kind of a unique zoning district. It's got two distinct areas, the area south of First Street, First and 12th, sorry, the area south of First and then 12th Street, west of Vine. And they are very different. So that zone was kind of modified in the use table to clarify where certain things would be allowed in one part but not the other, where it just made more sense. So there were some changes in the code associated with that for office professional zone. A new industrial artisan use was added. This is kind of an evolving use that we wanted to accommodate to allow some more small-scale kind of craft artisan production that also includes some retail sales. We wanted to allow this in more areas of the community. So that is a new use that is added. Another change is to introduce restricted retail and restricted personal services. Restricted retail includes tobacco or vape shops, pawn shops. Restricted personal services would be check cashing, massage, tanning salons. These particular uses are carved out from the general retail and allowed with a conditional use permit. So we've kind of separated rather than having each type of retail listed. We've clumped them together, but where we needed to separate certain uses out, those would have a conditional use permit and a separate definition. This article also pairs with our Article Six, which is standards for specific uses where we've included some performance standards for a lot of these uses, including restricted retail and personal services. A new food truck court use was added to the use table as a temporary use in certain zones. Heavy industrial was also modified. In the process here, again, we combined a lot of different heavy industrial uses into one consolidated heavy industrial use. In the past, a lot of these uses were allowed by right, but staff felt that the kind of heavy-duty nature of the use and potential impacts associated with heavy industry really warranted the use of a CUP associated with that, so we wanted to make that change. And self-storage as well. It was previously allowed in the AP and PM zoning districts. Moving forward, new self-storage would not be allowed in those different districts, really intended to preserve land for more viable and less visually impactful uses moving forward. So as I mentioned, the next chapters in Article Three are organized by that zoning district type, residential, commercial. Within the residential zoning districts, there's, of course, single-family residential. The existing standards were pretty confusing and a little disjointed. So the primary effort for this chapter was really to reorganize it and simplify it, make it as clear as possible. A couple of changes to note, in the RA district, which is a very small district, not applied in very many places, but the existing code lists height for habitable and non-habitable spaces with an allowance up to 50 feet for non-habitable spaces. We've introduced a new section about projections into the height limit that happens in Article Four, and we wanted to keep everything within that umbrella, projections within the height limit, and list what those things are that are allowed to go a particular height above, be it a chimney, you know, eight feet, be it a roof structure at 10 feet, or if it's, you know, an elevator shaft in commercial zones. So across the board, this happens in RA and a few other commercial zones where that non-habitable space height allowance has been modified. To be a little bit more consistent with kind of best practices and to make it a little bit easier, especially on smaller lots, the minimum distance between buildings in the R1 district is proposed to be reduced from 10 feet to 6 feet. And also, there's an additional second-story setback requirement. Currently, second stories in the R1 district have to be set back 10 feet from the side property line. This was removed, so you don't have to do the cake setback, but the ground floor setbacks remain the same whereby it's a five-foot setback regardless, unless you have a really wide lot. If you have a wide lot, you are required to have a 10-foot setback on one side and a five-foot setback on the other, and that didn't change. It's really just the requirement for that cake-like step back on the second floor that was removed. Also, in order to kind of provide some design cues to applicants of new single-family dwellings, we've added a kind of minimal list of objective design standards for single-family dwellings, really kind of basic, just provide an entryway feature like a porch or some other kind of key signification that this is the front entryway, a minimum transparency of 10% for windows and openings, and no flat roofs. So pretty simplistic, but really just trying to step up and provide some of those design cues for developers moving forward. Similarly, in multifamily zoning districts, existing standards were carried forward. The changes to note include reduction in that space between buildings. For multifamily, it was 20 feet for three-story buildings, and that was reduced to 10 feet. Staff has found that that often comes up as a modification and kind of gets tricky just in site plan layout, and we felt that that could be reduced as well. Stepbacks for accessory structures were also simplified to parallel what is allowed in the R1 zoning districts. And then finally, the R3O zone. This is kind of an interesting district. It doesn't apply in very many places in town, but it lacked standards and the uses didn't quite seem to match it. So a new section was added that just clarifies what development standards apply to the R3O zoning districts and what uses are allowed in the R3Os district. Again, commercial zoning districts largely carried forward. One change to note is that consistent height limit fact that I mentioned about the RA district, about non-habitable height limits, now regulated through projections instead, and each individual projection. Additional transition standards are also added where a commercial zone is adjacent to an R1 zoning district. There's always been the setback requirement, but now we've also added an additional buffering kind of requirement with a fence and landscaping to happen within that setback area. The office professional zone, which I mentioned, was also rewritten. Originally, it was written with a lot of unique standards that were kind of culled out. It was a bit duplicative and kind of made to be more unique than it maybe necessarily had to be. So again, making it a little bit more consistent with the rest of the code and the rest of the city's standards. and the rest of the city's standards. The mixed-use overlay was also clarified. We added some language about what really was the intent of the mixed-use overlay, which is to allow standalone residential, mixed-use, or commercial to happen within that space. And some specifics about how open space should be provided, including some set dimensions for, for open spaces. And also, there was an incentive to provide private open space, and that was removed from the mixed-use overlay. Article Four is another really important section of the code. This is where the standards that apply to all of the zoning districts live. This is where we talk about how height is measured, setback measurements, the standards for accessory structures, fences, parking, landscaping, signs, all of these things that apply across the board in all zones. This is where they live. And again, most of the content in this article remains the same as the existing code, but a few changes to know. The first chapter in this article is the Rules of Measurement section, and another one of my favorite sections. I'm, I'm hoping this one will be very useful moving forward. The goal is really to try and reduce that need for interpretation by both staff and applicants. Within this section, there is one change that I wanted to point out since the last time we met. This chapter includes a section on projections into the height limit that I discussed, but also projections into setbacks. And at our last meeting, we mentioned that porches could not project into the front or, or side setbacks. And we heard from the planning commission, we heard comments and further discussion around that, and staff discussed and, and made some revisions to that, that, which you saw, which we discussed in the last, in the last meeting, to instead allow porches to project in six feet into the front and three feet into the side setbacks. This kind of coupled with the new objective standards for a single-family essentially gives people a lot more flexibility to, in design. Because as one commissioner pointed out, that it would really kind of force more recessed porches. This would allow more projecting porches as, as an architect or a designer sees fit. Article Four also includes a chapter on landscaping. One new requirement is to include at least some live plant material in, in those required landscaped areas. This is a 30% of required landscaped areas should have live plant material in them. This is, this is really trying to avoid projects using just rocks or, or DG or, and, and calling it landscaping, which is really not the intent of landscaping. More detail was also added to ensure adequate screening of mechanical equipment. We also added some requirements for the location, either behind, behind the front facade of the building and screening on roofs and at grade, and also included backflow devices in that as well. Parking standards remain largely the same, but we tried to add some clarity where there's been ambiguity in the past. So, for example, sometimes there's some kind of need for interpretation when a use changes, or there is a additional area, the use is expanded into an additional area, or there's additional floor, floor area added. And so there's different interpretations about, you know, do, do they need to provide more parking? So we added some language to say when uses are expanded, floor areas expanded by 20% or more, then they have to start providing that additional parking. Parking standards were also added for some uses that weren't listed before, like assisted living, supportive housing. And there's also a new reduced parking ratio for, for very small multifamily uses if they're less than 600 square feet. So to comply with state law requirements, to have more objective design standards for our multifamily development and in a, in a larger effort to streamline multifamily housing development, a new section of objective design standards was crafted. We looked at this section a couple of times. The, the standards were crafted with your feedback really to provide some flexibility to developers with menus of optional design features that they can use to comply with the objective standards. So the number of required features increases with the scale of the project, but applicants can choose from a variety of different options of how they want to comply with wall plane variation, how they're going to provide their fenestration, how they're going to provide their roof variation. They have options with which they can use to, to figure out how to comply. So we're not looking for cookie cutter, everything to look the same. We really wanted to set those standards to be flexible but clear in the requirements. There's also a new sign code that is significantly rearranged, but the general content pertaining to, you know, how big a sign can be, doesn't change. More clarity is given on how a sign is measured and when a sign program is required, and how deviations to standards are processed, either through a development plan modification or site plan modification. In general, however, the sign code was also rewritten to address content neutrality, consistent with case law. The, the case is Reed versus the Town of Gilbert. So a, a person shouldn't have to read a sign in order to know what the standards for that sign are. So we looked at ways to really cut out the content references within the sign code and keep it as content neutral as possible. One other change since the public review draft was released last month, a couple of clarifications to the sign section that we wanted to point out. And they're, they're pretty minor changes, really just clarifications. We wanted to clarify that flags are flags and, and not commercial speech. Didn't want to give exemptions for, for additional flags to be posted that did include commercial speech. So a couple of clarifications were caught there. And then the second is to clarify about a directory sign. The intent is really for that to be a small building mounted sign, four square feet, and there was a typo of it being 24 square feet. So that change or clarification will be folded into the final draft that you'll see next month. Article Five lists the special regulations for certain unique developments. These are things that staff finds come up kind of all the time. They see over and over, and so they're in a separate section, so they're easy to find. Some of the more notable changes, I think, in this section, there's not a lot of big changes to this section, but a few made to accessory dwelling units. There's been a lot of changes to state law over the years, and the city's incorporated those into the zoning code. But where the state is silent, the city has added a few additional standards, kind of passable specific, including allowing a reduced setback between the ADU and the primary structure, and also adding a maximum size of a garage for, if it's attached to the ADU. Article Six, I mentioned this one. This provides standards for particular uses. So either performance standards or development standards that are tailored to the use rather than to the zoning district. And like the other articles, the content of this article really draws largely from the existing code language. But there are a few new things that are added here, including a rewritten section on animal keeping. A new maximum density limitation was added for different types of animals and kind of instances that would trigger more review, like a conditional use permit were also added there. New standards are also included for that new restricted retail and restricted personal services use. So that has distancing requirements between those types of uses, distancing between other sensitive uses like schools and parks, as well as hours of operation. Some standards for food trucks are added where they can be parked, requirements for litter removal, things like that. And some new standards are added for self-storage and outdoor storage areas for landscaping and screening. And then also new standards are added for assisted living, residential care. So the city's had a kind of a, an, an interpretation about density of, of beds per acre, and that's codified in this section here. Article Seven establishes the provisions for the, the regulation of legally non-conforming uses, as well as non-conforming structures and non-conforming lots. Something is legally non-conforming if it was established lawfully under the regulations that were in place at the time, but then the laws change, the code changes, and then now it doesn't comply anymore. So that's something that's legally non-conforming. And so that is what this article is dealing with. These are not dealing with fully non-conforming things that are illegal. This is legally non-conforming components. And much again, again, much of this article is carried forward from the existing code. There's a few changes that we wanted to point out with regard to kind of how a non-conforming structure is interpreted, that threshold for, for when it's fully destroyed. That piece is clarified. We've given a little bit more latitude with a non-conforming use. The current time limit is, it's considered abandoned after six months. We're giving 12 months. And then we added some new standards about non-conforming parking, fences, and landscaping, which were silent in the past. And here, again, we did want to make one minor clarification. While the entire section is about legal non-conforming uses, we, we just want to make that really clear, and this section didn't feel that clear. So we wanted to make it clear that legal non-conforming, we, this section for fences does state when multifamily and commercial fences, legal non-conforming fences need to be brought up to code when improvements are, are incorporated. But for single-family, it's not required, but it's not required for legal non-conforming fences, not illegal fences. So we just wanted to double-state that here. Article Eight is our environmental standards section. And again, these are carried forward from the existing code. Your existing code has performance standards, the surface mine and mining and reclamation section, noise. The key changes that we wanted to point out in this section pertain to hillside standards and lighting standards. With hillside standards, there currently is a hillside overlay, which was removed as part of this process. And instead, we would just say that hillside standards are based on a, a particular slope. If you meet this slope, then you must comply with these standards rather than putting it on a map. Because we found that there are certain parts of town that maybe should have had the overlay applied that didn't, and certain parts of town that had the overlay applied that didn't need to have it. So it's more important to base it on the slope of the individual parcel, which is how this was written. We also clarified the process. So based on the slope, where someone's allowed to do pad grating versus do stem walls, and some additional standards about erosion control and the additional requirement of tree planting to support that erosion control were also added. We also have new lighting standards, response to public comment about night sky compliant standards. We've added a kind of a whole new section on lighting standards that requires them to be shielded so that they do not project out and that features are also required to be night sky compliant or equivalent. And then finally, Article Nine, our terms and definitions, another really important article. Often definitions and land use definitions are muddled together all in one section, but here we've divided them out. So every use in the use table is listed in our Chapter 21.91, our land use definitions, and all of our general definitions, like what is a fence? Or what is, you know, a setback? Those all live in our general definitions. We have a lot of our definitions carried forward. We've tweaked a lot using best practices and just kind of trying to clarify that language. And hopefully, the, the, the terms and definitions section will be something that helps people make their interpretations and understand the code and bring everything together for people. So that summarizes the, the bulk of the zoning code tonight, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Genevieve. Boy, that's a lot of work. So we'll take it to the commission. So commissioners, looking over to my right, any questions for Genevieve at this moment?
I just have.
Commissioner Neil?
Sorry.
No, you're good.
I just have one on Chapter 21.33, R1 Zone. It's on page 110 of 583. We have limited the roofs to no flat roofs. But in the Spanish Revival of the Uptown Specific Plan, that is specifically allowed is a flat roof with parapet. So I'm not sure why we have limited it elsewhere. So that was just really my only comment on all of this at the moment, so.
So this would not apply to the Uptown Town Center Specific Plan? It only applies outside of that area?
I, I, I understand that, but I'm not sure why we allow it in the Uptown, but not anywhere else in town is my real question.
So I'll take a stab at that. I think with the specific plan, we have other development standards that are in our appendix, the architectural standards, so that if someone's choosing a flat roof, there's usually other architectural design components. With the R1, we don't have a lot of other factors that we can say, well, if you're doing a flat roof, you'll also need to do this and this to achieve this architectural style. So I think that's the difference with the R1 versus the specific plan. But with, with our original, you know, draft that we're putting out for you. So definitely, can you hear me better? Okay, definitely open for, for discussing that one more.
And then we may want to define flat roof because no roofs are actually ever flat. So maybe a slope of less than X for 12, in 12.
I popped up to point out that the, the remedy, if you wanted to do a flat roof on a single-family residence, is actually just to go to DRC. And DRC would then just make sure that it's done with like, you know, that the architecture is compatible and attractive. And anyway, so it is not that you could never do a flat roof. It's that you have to get, you know, that the, the roof needs to be designed in keeping with an overarching style.
Good, you're good. Any other comments? Commissioner Kober?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just maybe a couple of questions relative to recreational vehicles. I recall there's a provision in there that talks about how if they're going to be in the front yard of a property, it needs to be on a paved surface, presumably a driveway to park in. Restrictions for any other locations on the lot? I know it's addressed if there are canopies proposed, there's a development modification option there. Is, are there any other restrictions on parking in side lots or rear lots other than the canopy thing?
I'm trying to think if there's any other restrictions. Is there a page number that you were looking at? Or just, it was something that you noted? Right. Yeah, so I do know with the, the current code, and I, I want to say we carried it forward. So you can't, you know, block like the required covered parking. In this case, most of the time it's a single-family. So you can't block a required parking space for, for the house. So if you had a wide enough area, you could have that parking in the front. I believe we kept that. I'd have to double-check because it's a very long code. But so, so, but then the other question about other places you could park, you know, the rule thumb would be if it's paved and then if it's not paved and it then, well, I guess if it's some, so we have some one-acre lots where we've kind of had some interpretations. And I want to say that we also tried to codify those if it was on like a DG surface or if it was, it was not visible. Because we do have some one-acre lots where people have put their RV in front of the house on a non-paved surface, but no one can see it. So let me, Katie, did you have anything to add?
Not really. And the, the, where you can store an RV is definitely standards that we toyed with and, and I think brought to the commission to discuss. And, you know, we, we, there are certainly communities that don't allow RVs to be stored in the front setback. That is currently not in the draft in front of you. Certainly something that could be added if that's the planning commission's desire. But we did discuss this in, you know, in previous iterations. And so at this point, the code would allow you to store an RV in your front yard or in your backyard, wherever you, you, would you like to store it? Is currently how it reads.
And that storage, though, if it's in the front, I think specifically was called out to be hard-surfaced.
It does have to be on a hard surface. That's actually in the code today.
Okay, so that's a carryover. And related to that kind of sort of, the provision on canopies certainly talks about, talks about recreational vehicles, boats, campers, travel trailers, on and on and on, not automobiles. We talked as a group about some of these little large home improvement store things you can buy that's almost a tent-like shelter that's on post. Is that addressed in here? Because we had talked about, maybe there was need to address that.
It is addressed. It, it proved to, it was definitely a hard nut to crack. It's in, and I'd love for Genevieve to jump in, but we definitely, we have a. It's in, and I'd love for Genevieve to jump in, but we definitely, we have attempted to address it. And Genevieve, is that in Article four?
Yeah, it should be under Article four, under canopies again, but we should look at that and make sure that it lists. Because the intent was really to include that automobiles within the canopies.
And for what it's worth, I did find the section, it's on page 330 of 538. 21.48.090 is the section that talks about parking for storage of commercial vehicles, recreational vehicles and boats. And then it talks about the paving and, you know, dwelling use prohibited, so specific to RVs. But I think that's, and there's another section that we're also looking for.
I don't, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I did find if somebody parking a car on a driveway, for example, with one of these canopies, it seems to be excluded under item 12, which is on 413, section 413, because it talks about not including automobiles, trucks, motorcycles, ATVs and so forth. So maybe that can just come back as a further note in the future, but a clarification on that would be helpful. Thank you.
Can I ask, are you looking for the canopy to allow the car parking in the front driveway? Is that something you would, you would want to see? So what we did with the, with the canopy section is, you know, largely thinking about those canopies that are popping up in the back of, of someone's lot, sometimes in the side and sometimes in front of the driveway, and limiting them to three canopies. Are you, am I hearing that, that the commission would like to see canopies allowed in the driveway to support car parking?
You just used commissions plural. I can only say this commissioner would not like to see that.
So currently, you can't, you cannot put any sort of detached structure in your, any structure in your front setback. So even under today's standards, in your front setback, you can't put a canopy, not to say that people don't do it, but, but it is not currently allowed and nor would it be in the future.
And this could continue that prohibition?
That is correct.
Obviously, there's enforcement issues related to that, but technically you can't do it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Neal?
I'm reading the same section that Commissioner Kober is. I think it's section 12 on sheet four or 413. And it seems to imply that you can't have a canopy, carport or similar shelter for recreation vehicles, travel trailers, you have to be out of it, but not including automobiles, trucks and motorcycles. So it feels to me like you just said you can't have it, but if it's for a car, you can have it. So I guess that's my question. And I think that may be some of Commissioner Kober's not speaking for question. So I think if you took out but not, maybe that would address the concern.
So most of that language is in the existing code. And what that whole section is about is allowing these car covers to exist in your side setback. It is not allowing them in your front setback. I believe in the past, 20 years ago sometime, there was someone who wanted to put a car cover in their side yard, and this code section was created in order to allow that so that everyone has that opportunity. So this, unless I'm looking at the wrong section, I believe that's what that whole code section addresses, is allowing a mod, I can't remember if it's now a use permit or a modification, but it would allow you to put these metal carports in your side yard.
But I think to the, to the commissioner's point, that it's unclear because we say it's required for RVs, but not including automobiles. So I think, I think that there is, I think you're right. If we take out but not including, I think it's a similar shelter for RVs, boats, trucks, automobiles, everything. They have to get a development plan modification to put it in their interior side setback or rear setback.
Yeah, I, my, again, this is 20 years ago. My understanding was it was specific for RVs and the idea was not to allow cars in part because of, like, people were working on the cars. And I don't know, Darcy, if you can remember, there was some logic behind it, whether or not we're still convinced that that's what should be in there today. That was the logic at the time.
I see.
I think the institutional knowledge did come from Darren, and that's the direction we were going with it. But yeah, certainly we can be more modern and go in a different direction.
Okay, Genevieve or staff, I got a question. Back to RV parking. So I'm doing this cautiously. I've had a couple of neighbors approach me. They know I'm on the commission. One of our neighbors has had their RV parked motorhome right in front of their house in the driveway, but it's been there now six or seven months. So in response, he parks his vehicles out in the cul-de-sac and looks horrible. So my question is, in that section, is there anything about the time, the length of time that somebody can park? I understand that it's okay, but there is no time restriction? Is that accurate?
The current draft does not include any sort of time limitation. But it is a draft, that's why we're here.
Right. Yeah, I find that really interesting that there is not, I mean, we restrict it to the front of the home, right? But if it's a paved, I'm sorry, we don't restrict it to the, hang on, I'm getting it backwards. We restrict it to the front of the home in the street, but we don't restrict it to the driveway. Is that accurate?
I don't think so. You can park your RV on, in your front setback as long as it's on a paved surface. There are limits to how much of your front yard can be paved. But as long as your RV is on your driveway, you can park it in the front, you know, in front of your house, and there's no time limit today nor proposed.
But if the RV is parked in the street?
So then the California vehicle code kicks in and you get 72 hours, and then the vehicle has to be moved every 72 hours.
Okay, so just my own personal, I find it interesting that somebody who does not have a very large driveway, literally barely, it sticks out into the public parking street, and it's been there, and I love my neighbor, but it's been there six, seven months, and it looks bad. Commissioner Neal?
I think I remember it was Marcy, Darcy said that if it, it could be parked in the front if it didn't take other required parking?
Right, so, so we can't preclude the ability, like, you can't block off the required parking. So if they had, the typical situation is if they have a three-car garage and they're parking on that third side, that they're maintaining the two covered parking spaces, which is, you know, with single family, usually they have a garage. So that's the required parking. You can't block it, is I think how I've interpreted the code in the past. And I think that our goal is to make that very clear because code enforcement, that has been an issue over the years.
So that might apply since they're blocking the driveway, that might cause this particular issue to be nonconforming? Or a issue similar to this to be nonconforming?
Interesting, okay. I just find that interesting that there's really no time, time restriction on something like that. So that was just my own personal thing. So I might be getting ahead of myself a little bit, Genevieve. So I know there's next steps. One of the complaints that I've heard over and over again, which is one of the reasons why this is being redone is to make it user-friendly, easier to use. The tool in which people are going to use to search the material, what's that going to look like? Is there going to be a demonstration in how to use the tool? If I were a builder looking to do something and I needed something specific, could I plug in a comment in the search bar and then it's going to reference me to, to the location within the code where I can find the material I'm looking for? What's, what's kind of, what's going to, what's that going to look like? And maybe that's, are we too early in that conversation?
No, I think, so right now, we're still in a, in a PDF format. So that's not the, the most user-friendly. But this will be fed into the city's MuniCode provider. So right now, the, the way that it's structured, it's impossible to find anything because the headings are all messed up. So just simply the reorganization is going to make this leaps and bounds easier to, to address through, you know, hyperlinks, clicks, through headings and that structure. And, and the search function will also exist. So you can find it throughout each of the sections that that particular thing exists in. The city has not done a separate search type development code menu kind of thing where it would link into GIS and those types of things at this point. But the, the next step would be to feed it into the MuniCode system and see how much better it works with that.
Understood, understood. And then remind me again about the review. We saw some comments made about not allowing enough public review of such a daunting, you know, book of information. I understand that it's in review now, currently out to the public, correct? And it has been now for 30 days?
Yes, Katie or Darcy might know the date that it went fully live, but it's been out for a while.
Yeah, we didn't quite make 30 days for this draft, but of course, we are, we do still have additional hearings. And then we have been bringing chunks for about two years for, you know, for public review. And those documents have been available that entire time for us to, to receive comments. But the complete draft, I'm going to forget the date. We missed the 30 day. We were, we were hoping to get it out for 30 days, but we, we did miss that target. Thank you.
But it's certainly 30 days before the next hearing, well, well before them.
Okay, so the next step is what then?
So the next step is to take any feedback that we hear from you tonight, anything else that we get from public comment, and wrap that into the final draft for you to see in next month.
In August. Okay, excellent. Is there any other commissioner comments?
Well, I'd just like to echo, I was reading through our comments here from public comments, and there seems to be at least one person who is not a super big fan of the process. So I understand that it's in draft now, people can review it. Is there, is there going to be like another final public workshop type deal where, you know, citizens like this can, you know, because yeah, they can come and make their comments, but are we entertaining those comments and making sure that, you know, we're addressing them in the appropriate way? And maybe that's more towards staff, because I just reading through this, some of the, you know, some of it's a little long-winded, but some of the concerns are really, you know, seem fairly valid because we do hear comments and then we kind of move on with it. And sometimes we address them and sometimes we don't. And, you know, I think everyone should be heard to some degree, right?
So the, the planning commission will hear this again on August the 13th. That's our next target date. And then the city council will have at least one hearing, at least two hearings because the first read and second read. But there will also be those public forums in which to give comments. Staff takes comments, you know, any, any, you know, our email address, you know, like everyone's inbox is always open, so we definitely can take comments. And we have tried to address them as possible, and then we bring them to the planning commission, you know, requesting from you, do you want us to address these, you know, are these public comments, you know, or is that what you'd like to see in the code? And so then we incorporate those. And that's, you know, we've been iteratively, you know, addressing the comments we hear from planning commission, public comments, and just trying to compile all those into the final draft that you have right now.
I think one thing to keep in mind, you know, we've hired a consultant, we spend a lot of time listening to a lot of folks. What we presented tonight is basically staff's preferred recommended version. There's always going to be somebody that's got a different idea. Really, the purpose of filtering that kind of comment, that's what we're asking you to do. Either tell us what you want, or if you hear something or see something in writing that you agree with, and the majority of the commission wants that change to be made, this is the way to do it. But we, we can't, you know, staff arbitrarily just make a change because somebody sent us an email. That would subvert all the direction we've gotten from the commission. So it's up for the commission now to take those public comments. If you see something in there you want to change, you need to tell us tonight, yeah, this needs to be changed. But staff isn't going to, you know, just make willy-nilly changes based on, you know, individual comments at this point. Yeah, and I understand that. I just, I wanted to understand this process a little bit better, and I appreciate you giving that input so that I can take it and, you know, provide the information that I think is necessary or I would agree with. So thank you.
And can I also note, you know, a comprehensive update like this, this is, this is not the last time you'll ever see a zoning text amendment either. We see often, you know, a year after, as we start to implement these, if, you know, things come up where we, we find that it's being interpreted in a different way, or it's not working the way that we wanted it to work, zoning text amendments, you know, there's, there's no limitation on those as well. So, you know, hopefully we got it as right as we can. But this is not the 100% last time you'll ever see a zoning text amendment.
Sweet.
Yeah. Okay, if there are no other commissioner comments, Marcy, do we have any public callers? Any public comment?
Yes, we do have one caller on the line.
Okay.
Give me just a second. Caller, can you hear us?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, I can. Yeah, hi, this is Jeff Carr, resident of Paso Robles. Yeah, I wanted to have a few, have a few comments that I've been making throughout the process. But unfortunately, yeah, I'm one of those public comments that, I'm one of those public residents that's not a fan, as was mentioned, of the process. And I'm not seeing a lot of the public comments addressed. I'm not seeing my public comments addressed. I was happy to see that you made a reference to the lighting, the one public comment that was made verbally about lighting. And that was good. I guess you put in some things about lighting. And, but it would have been not, but usually when you do a document like this, you might have documented that public comment and then shown, this is how we address that public comment. Now, unless that person just happens to read the document or listen to this meeting, he has no clue at the moment, I think, whether his public comments were addressed or not. And I, at the moment, I can't, I can't tell you how well they were addressed. And, and even now, you're still at a very high level. I actually thought you were ready to go to get Planning Commission approval tonight. So now it's good to know, oh, this is just, this is another workshop. First I heard it was a workshop or a study, a session. So the whole process has been a little bit ambiguous and difficult to follow. So, so I still got some time and I'm going to put some more detailed, deep comments in. But even now, listening to the presentation, I wonder why at this point, she's, she's, she's presenting things to charts. Why aren't you presenting it to the actual document at this point? Because I can read those charts and I can hear your goals, and it all sounds great. But when I go to read the document, I can't connect from point A to B. I can't connect from your statements and those diagrams over to the, to the actual document. I think it's time you actually put the document up there and start addressing it, your, what you're doing in this document to make things better or to address these needs. Because this is all just too high level at this point in time. Because my, my concerns are with the document, not with your PowerPoint charts or whatever you're using. So yeah, I do have a lot of concerns because there, I mean, you talked about there were, there were stockholder or shareholder, I don't know what you call them, but different interviews that were done. I like to see all those comments. Where were those in the stakeholder, the stakeholder comments that were made? Those should have been documented. All public comments should have been documented. All other comments from staff or other departments, I know there's been comments from Paso Robles Waste, I know there's been comments from the police department, those should have been documented so we can see and they can see how their comments translate into a final document. That's not done. So it's really, you know, we just got to have to throw our comments out there and hope, keep our fingers crossed. And that, that's, you know, how I, and that's why I'm not a fan, because I, I need a little more precise understanding that public comment and all comments are being addressed, who's making the comments and who's, who's driving this document? I mean, my, I mean, I have lots of comments, but the ones I put out most recently were in the home occupation area, which I think is, is still very confusing and arbitrary, is the word I use.
Mr. Carr, your time, your time is up. Mr. Carr, your time is up.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I hope you heard some of that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other callers, Marcy?
No, no other callers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment for now. Any, do we need to respond to that in any way, staff?
I think those were general statements. So I think once again, if there's something the commission wants staff to specifically address, we're open to that, those comments and direction.
I guess the only question I would have for Genevieve, I guess, is we did mention all the stakeholders that were involved, and there were quite a few of them involved. Do we typically share the stakeholder comments to the public in any kind of type of document? I guess to Genevieve or staff?
Yes, so often we don't associate an individual with those comments. We don't say this individual said this thing. Those, those are conversations kind of done in anonymity for, you know, these are people who work with the city, they, and we want them to be as, you know, as forthcoming as possible. They, and we want them to be as, you know, as forthcoming as possible. So staff, city staff was not in those interviews. So we combine all of those into a summary where it's not kind of clear who's saying what, but we get the, the point across of, of what the key insights are, and that summary was included. And Katie, I believe that that was included with the public comment packet that was added tonight.
That is correct. So we attempted to compile all, all comments that we had received over the last couple of years. We, that all occurred today, and, and we know that we've missed some comments. And so we're going to attempt to bring a more comprehensive list next month when we come back with, with the, the zoning code again. But yes, the summary was included in the addendum this evening.
Got it, okay. All right, my final comment is, I know a lot of work has been put in this. And unfortunately, you're not going to make a hundred percent of the people happy with the end result. So I know that Genevieve, staff, everybody that's been involved in this, there's been a tremendous amount of time, effort. And the end result is, the final product is going to be better, much better than what we've had. It may not be perfect, but it's definitely a step in the right direction, is my comment. And I think it's going to be user-friendly, better, if that's a fair comment. So I'm just, I'm, I'm very proud of the staff and Genevieve for all the work that you guys have put into this. And yeah, it's, it's going to be time well spent, and I think the end result is going to be, is going to be very good. Okay, any other final comments?
One comment, Mr. Chair. So attachment one, Genevieve, is the summary? As, or maybe I should ask Katie, that it's included within our handout tonight?
I, I, I knew that we had compiled them. I don't know what order they're in. Yes, it was the addendum for H1, and.
It's five eighty-seven?
I think it's at the end. I thought it was at the end of the addendum.
Yes, five eighty-seven.
The only comment I would have on that, I, I was present at some of the, not the stakeholder interviews, but HCOC meetings. We went through a similar process with identifying different ideas. The ones that are identified on page five eighty-nine are unreadable for anybody that picks up the print version of this. So it might be helpful if that was produced in some a little bit larger format, because there's a lot of information there, for example, that you can lose by glancing at the page. Online, it's much easier. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd just like to reiterate what my fellow Commissioner Kovaruvia said. You guys did, there's a lot of work in this. And e- even from a standpoint of that the digital online version that's readable is not available. I, I have it here just on my iPad, and as we go through this, I can very quickly search for keywords and information and get to the data very quickly, even just in a PDF version. So if the, the public is there, I would recommend that. And to answer, Mr. Carr, respond to him as far as the PowerPoints go. We have gone through each article, the actual document, over the course of four or five different sessions where we actually dove into those. So I would encourage any public people, the public, if they have, want to review that, to go back to those YouTube videos and review that, because we did go through those. I think a tremendous amount of work's been done, and if there are things that continue to be an issue, we as the commission and the city of Paso Robles, I believe, will, you know, make amendments and changes to those to make it as easy and streamlined for the public as possible. But again, this is a complex, long document that's been, a lot of information compiled into a very more simple form. And, and hopefully over the time, it'll get easier and better. So I, I do recognize the amount of effort that's gone into this, and it, it's going to make life a lot better for a lot of people. So I appreciate that.
All right, Commissioner Marlowe, thank you for that. And no other comments? Oh, one more comment, Mr. Kogler?
Wanting to add on a positive note, I just want to thank you for addressing beekeeping. For some reason, some beekeepers have bent my ear from time to time, and there wasn't really any ability to do that. It's, the standards seem reasonable to me, so thank you.
Okay, with that, Genevieve, thank you very much.
So Mr. Kovaruvia? Yes, sir. Just one more comment, just on kind of the dealing with, you know, the scope of this document and, you know, the acknowledgement that you're not going to get it perfect the first time. I think the city dealt with a very similar thing when we adopted the Uptown Town Center Specific Plan in two thousand and eleven. That was a massive change in terms of the rules for the downtown, and there was a lot of concern about unanticipated, you know, impacts from all those changes. So what the, the city ended up doing, which I think was a really good process, was they agreed to just do periodic reviews and updates. So I think it was almost like a six-month process. And after two years, pretty much all those things have been cleaned up. So I think, you know, when we come back for a final recommendation, that might be an appropriate recommendation to the council, is that we just have a regular, like, six-month schedule where the things that we just missed or didn't work out the way we intended would automatically come through and we'll just agendize it and get these items cleaned up. And I'm thinking after, you know, two or three of those cycles, we should be, you know, pretty close.
I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that should definitely, over time, take care of most of the things that are, that get missed or slip through the cracks. So I think it's a great idea. Okay, any other final comments? We're good. Genevieve, once again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, on to item I, consent calendar. Any questions, changes? I'll, I'll be looking for a motion.
Chairperson Kovaruvia, I would like to make a motion. I vote to approve the consent calendar for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, Planning Commission meeting. Third, twenty twenty-four development review.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Neal. Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Marlowe. Can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Neal? Commissioner Marlowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Chairperson Kovaruvia?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, on to other reports. Paso Robles Street, Streetscape Ad hoc Committee report?
Uh, no, no report tonight.
Okay. Housing Constraints and Opportunities Committee?
So that was tonight?
That was tonight.
That was tonight, that's what we just did. Well done.
I like it. Any questions about the, the DRC Committee rotation schedule? Any conflict schedules, anything? I know Pat needed some fill-in for next week, I believe. Has anybody, Marcy, responded to that yet to be able to help him out?
No.
Okay, so he's still looking for coverage on the fifteenth, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if anybody can do that, I'm sure Pat would appreciate that. Okay, on to item K, Planning Commissioner's final comments. Any comments? No, seeing none? Staff comments?
Yeah, just a reminder, the fair is coming out, so there will be no meeting on July twenty-third for the Planning Commission. There's a fifth Tuesday in August as well, so that puts your next meeting out to August thirteenth. And project update issues, we continue to work on the landing, which is the boys' school project changes. We expect that the EIR will be ready to circulate sometime this summer, probably late July, early August. We'll copy the commission on that when the revised EIR is out for public review. That'll be a forty-five-day public review period, that then we'll move it toward a hearing schedule potentially around the end of the year. And I think that concludes staff's report tonight.
Awesome, thank you, sir. And I then will look for a motion to adjourn. So moved, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.